Really? You know, if you said that, you'll never say that again.
I didn't say that one.
Okay.
Inside joke, folks. Inside joke.
We're gonna call this meeting to order. Seven o'clock. What the date? Excuse me, I'm a little bit.
March eighth.
March eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. And we'll start real call to the left.
Homer, city council member.
Dr. Joseph Ford, city council member.
Shelby Carcelary, city council member.
Ronnie Price, mayor.
Mike Warrington, city council member.
Tim Berry, city council member.
Bubba Cannon, police chief.
Donna Davis, chief financial officer.
Lance Onstock, assistant city administrator.
Chad Russell, fire chief.
Rick Lanza, director of public records utilities.
J T Klaus, city attorney with Jessica Williams.
Les Mangas, director of community development.
Susan Renner, city clerk.
Jennifer McCoslin, city administrator.
Right. At this time, Rick Newbauer of the Augusta First Baptist Church is gonna lead us in prayer. How you doing, sir?
Good. Apologize for not being dressed like me.
Cool hearts. This is what you get last minute. Heavenly Father, we love you. We thank you for, again, this time to be here as a community to celebrate the good things that are going on in our town. We pray that you would just watch over and bless us tonight as we do that. We also thank you for the privilege that we have of coming here before our elected leaders and sharing our concerns and voicing our opinions that we may make an impact into the decision-making process. And tonight especially, we just lift up those around the world who who don't have those freedoms, or maybe those freedoms are being infringed upon. Give us wisdom and guidance tonight. Lead us in everything we do. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, I'm gonna open the public forum. Do you have something you'd like to say, speak to us about, ask us? Now's the time to do it. State your name and address, and please keep it short. Nobody. All right. Public forum is closed. Acceptance of agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Seven awards, seven one service awards. And Jenny's gonna start us off with that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, and to all of our guests that are here, I'm guessing a lot of you are here for this item. Typically during the employee appreciation event, we will take the time to recognize service in five-year increments for those who had an anniversary in the prior year. Unfortunately, we're still every once in a while getting things derailed by COVID, and our employee appreciation event was scheduled for January, right in the middle of that most recent surge. We are working, Susan mostly, is working on getting us rescheduled for an employee event on April sixteenth. So we will still have a party. We will still enjoy each other's company outside of work hours and just be able to relax a little bit and let down our hair. But we didn't want some of these dates to go any farther than they already have because some of them have now passed more than thirteen months ago. So we're gonna go ahead tonight and have the department supervisors give the milestone awards for their employees, and we'll start first with Chief Russell, who has a couple to recognize.
While Felicia Massey and Rocky Craig make their way up here. Oh, the mayor and I would like to ask Jenny, what's the, what the comment about let our hair down?
I haven't done that for a while.
Wow. Not very woke. Right over here, youngins. So I have the pleasure of presenting service awards to the administrative assistant for the fire department, Felicia Massey, and the A shift captain, Rocky Craig. And we'll start with Felicia, who is getting a five-year award this year. I made a few notes here just so I wouldn't forget anything. And she does so much for the fire department. It's absolutely ridiculous how much of a different place it is now that she's here. She makes us look good, obviously in many ways, but some of them that you don't see. Her graphic design abilities are absolutely phenomenal. And everything we put out looks so much better now. She does the annual report. She re-wrote all of our forms. She makes us stand out. If you haven't seen the annual report, go to our fire department page on the website and check it out. It looks really nice. And that was a collective effort of one. Felicia does that, and she makes it really, really nice and does a great job of informing the community. A quick story about how much of a high performer she is. We have an administrative assistant conference for the admin assistant across the state. And Felicia and I started that. And it's supposed to move around the state, and so far it's been at Andover, and then Andover, and then
Probably gonna be Andover.
Andover. And every year Felicia says, no problem. We understand that you have things going on. We're not busy at all. So let us take care of it. And when she says us, she really means her. She does this type of stuff every single day, absolutely phenomenally high performer. And then I would be remiss without saying, there's a reason that the firefighters call her the fire station mom. She takes great care of us every single day.
And I'm kind of a big deal.
And she's kind of a big deal. I should have mentioned that. So Felicia, thank you so much for your five years of service. You wanna hand it to her? Yeah.
I took the box. Hold on, hold on. I'm always in trouble, Rock.
Thank you, Felicia. That's been my time. Oh, I thought of something on the way here, and I didn't have it in my notes, so I forgot it. International Women's Day, I would be remiss not to thank Felicia for her service as a United States Marine. Rocky Craig. Who in the room doesn't know Rocky Craig, right? His gregarious nature lends itself well to everything he does. He is an absolutely fantastic public servant. He embodies everything that we should embody. I have a note here that he treats others the way we should all strive to treat others. And he does it every single day. He's selfless. Service. The list is too long, but I'll he's vitally involved in Hands to Serve, which if you don't know what that is, it's an organization that helps people really in any way they need help, but a great organization for the fire department to be involved in with his leadership in that we go out and do service projects for folks at their homes. It's really, really cool, and Rocky is vitally important in that. Hometown Christmas, GAD. He developed home safety inspections that haven't taken off like he wanted them to yet. But like I told him when he did it, that is going to provide safety that we'll never be able to have a data metric for. And that's his baby, and we are trying to continue that now because he's been off for a little bit, and it will work, and it's all because of his work that that is going to happen. The list is super long here, but I would be remiss without mentioning his moral compass. Everything Rocky does is based on his ethics and his morals. And he works first to do the right thing, and he's been doing that for this community for over twenty years. I don't have anything to hand Rocky this evening because we're gonna surprise him. Look at I'm sorry, Rocky. We've got you this nice twenty-year pin. We actually have a really nice custom leather front that's going to be a wall display that is being worked right now. And we're gonna give that to him at the banquet, the fire department banquet later this year. Later this month, actually. Yep. So, Mr. Mayor, would you like to present the pin to him? Thank you both. And with that, I will turn the floor over to Chief Buchanan.
I've got the most. I've got a lot of them.
Where are you gonna put this book?
So we're gonna be here a while on this one. I am. Okay, I'm gonna need, let's just do one at a time because it's gonna be, take up this whole aisle right here. Steve, if you'd come up first, please. Chief, did you keep that twenty-year pin? Okay. Here's another twenty-year pin. So the city did do something different with our presentations on those over twenty, which I thought Susan had talked to me about it, and I thought, that's a great idea because a lot of times we have, these are beautiful wards, but something different, something special for them. So Steve, obviously, he worked with him on, hey, what do you think? So we have a special leather belt as well as a leather holster that we're gonna present to him at his retirement. So for those that don't know, surprise, he's retiring. It's not April Fool's joke on April first. So Steve has been so Steve started with us, obviously, twenty years ago, back in September. Overall, he's been in public service for over twenty-eight years. Six of those, over six years was with the Air Force, and then another few years was with the Conway Springs. Now, Steve and I met back in nineteen eighty-eight. We were in the Air Force together. Unfortunately, I can't tell too many stories because my daughter's here. And thank goodness, we don't have pictures either, but there's a few out there that just incriminating, yes. But Steve has done so much throughout his years. Obviously, twenty years with the department, you should have a major footprint, and Steve's got a big footprint on one of those. A lot of it, he is our expert in vehicles. So he brings his expertise from outside into the department, and he's done a lot to help fix and make recommendations on how to do cars instead of just having to take them off somewhere. I don't know cars worth anything. So even personal cars, hey, my car's making a sound. He's your guy. Steve also does, when we got body cameras, he was a major part of that, bringing those in, trying to get those set up. So with our department, a lot of things he's done is gonna have a long-lasting effect. You know, just like Chief Russell said, there's a part there that's just gonna continue over throughout the years. Another thing Steve does is field training. So I'm sure when he retires, he's gonna be glad. He's not gonna have to do that too much. As you get a little older, your patience runs just a little bit thin. So, but he will be definitely missed. And again, we're gonna have his retirement that's gonna be here on April the first, between two and four o'clock. Yes, thank you, Becky. So, but again, we thank Steve for his service and here's his pin. Mickey? So next.
This is Delta Viper. So I'm thinking, wow, that's what Andrew would have for twenty years.
Good pin.
Very special. Nothing but the best, Mark, that's right.
Yep. So we have Lieutenant Mickey Ferris. He's been with us for fifteen years now. Now, Mickey's story is kind of unusual. It's kind of like mine where there's been back and forth as far as reserves. And Mickey and I started one of the reserve classes. We were here back in nineteen ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-nine. So he always wanted to get in law enforcement. We didn't have positions at the time when he came out. So he left here, went to Twanda, was where he got his certification, and then he came back. So he's been back ever since. He was able to finally get him hired. So Mickey's one of those that, as Chief Keller will tell you, if you need it done, he's gonna do it. He's not gonna complain about it, and he's gonna make it better than he had it the first time. So he's one of those that, when I left, I trained him to do code enforcement, so I apologize. That was my fault on training him the way he was. But he took pride in it. You know, his thought was, we wanna clean this city up, and he cleaned it up. And he doesn't stop because a lot of times when there's a question about code, they go to Mickey. So he hasn't done it in quite a few years, but he's still, I consider him also the expert of code. Even though I did it, he's got me hands down, no doubt. Mickey had been a canine officer. That's where most people know him. A lot of in the town, you talk about Mickey, you're talking about one of the canine dogs. And he still continues that with association. He's done amazing job on, or mentoring our newer officers into that, and as well as the state. He's one of the trainers when it comes to when they wanna certify the dog. So we're grateful for having his knowledge and his willingness to just to take on something different. He's even worked court before, or they needed someone to help with that. He'll step up and say, I'll do it. So I'm grateful for him. Right now, he just got promoted this last year to lieutenant. It's been well-deserved, and he's leading a team that, with pride. He's done a phenomenal job stepping up to the plate and running it. So we thank Mickey as well. Next, we're gonna have Lance Parker. We've got a lot of fifteens. We've got three of them tonight. So Lance has been with us again for fifteen years as well. Lance actually came from Baldwin City before he came to us, so he's got seventeen years of dedication in law enforcement altogether. So when Lance came to us, Lance and I worked for quite a few years as SROs. And it's one of those that it was a passion. It takes a unique person to work in that position. You know, when you're going into someone else's environment, especially a school, it's different. It's not what you're used to. When I'm in a patrol car, I control it. But when I walk into school, a lot of officers kind of timid. All these young folks, it's intimidating. But Lance has stepped up and made it special. As a lot of the principals will tell you right now, Special Central High School, they love having them there. And it was kind of tough for Lance to get into that role because all these years he was a Trojan. And then he had to step over and finally learned Jaguar's the better way to go, so. So but he is. You know, every time I run into a principal, they wanna tell me how amazing job he's done in that position. Lance, over the years as well, he's done, held quite a few different positions. One where he's done a really good job of, and he's wanted to step up again and do this, is as far as a radar instructor. That's one of those, it's hard to find people to do these special jobs. And when he taught it before, he did a good job. He was also an NFTO. And the main part, again, I say this because it's a special job. It takes a special person, is that school resource officer. It's a very political position. People don't realize that because you're having to deal with kids, parents, teachers, principals, just a ton of people. And then you gotta deal with the police department staff. So it's one of those, he does a good job of balancing that. So we thank you for your fifteen, and hopefully you got fifteen more in you. Okay, Kelly Galloway. Yes, ma'am. Okay, now we got Kelly Galloway. She's been here, obviously, fifteen years as well. So it's my last fifteen I've got for right now. Kelly, not only has been fifteen years with Andover, she's worked five years with the Butler County nine-one-one, and then four years with Augusta EMS. So that's a Department of Safety, I'm sorry. And she's good, communication. That's what she's good at. So many years in public service, and that's another position where I couldn't imagine, and I did it part-time for a few months and hated it, to sit there, listen to those calls, not knowing I have to get up and run out the door. I'm used to that. I'm used to responding. Whereas a dispatcher has to sit there, has to be calm. And Kelly's got one of those voices. When you're on the radio, it keeps you calm. So as a responder, you need that person. You need someone that's strong in their position that's gonna be able to be calm to the person on the other side, as well as get the right information from the person. So it's a lot of tasks she does all at once. Not only does she do dispatch, she's also a records custodian, and really, that's her primary job. I should say she's a dispatcher or a nine-one-one communication officer. She's a record and evidence custodian. So all of our records, the requests we have, all the officers, the reports they do, it's Kelly. She's the one that kind of keeps us out of trouble because when our reports go to the state, a lot of times they'll kick them back. Well, she's the one that's that go-between to say, hey, this is wrong. They used to call them buckagrams. I call them kellyagrams. Where they're mistakes, you need to correct them, and she does a good job of trying to educate everybody on the right ways of doing it. Evidence is the other hard one. That's probably one of the toughest ones that can get an agency in trouble because when you start losing evidence, you can't find evidence, it's, you get in trouble by the KBI or other people start looking in on you. So Kelly makes sure that place is neat, clean, and if we need something, she can find it that quick. That's how good she is about doing her job, except for the scanner. So, again.
It's not my fault.
Nope. But do, we do thank Kelly. She'll be up here again in just a moment, but we thank her for all these years of her service. And again, I'll hope for you for fifteen more years at least, so. Okay, Becky. Hey, we got this down. Should by the fifth one. So now we have Becky Page. She's been with us for ten years. And it's kind of funny because, you know, when I first started in the schools, I've learned from working different jobs that your administrative assistant is one of the most important people you'll have. And she is. Because when Chief left me, left us, just back in September, yes, he left us. I can say that because he's not my chief anymore. So it's just one of those that I found out how big of a rock she is. She saves my career like you wouldn't believe. She's always on to me. You've got a schedule, you've got this, and it's a blessing to have that because with this position, you're all over the place. And she's all over the place because I put her all over the place, Becky, Becky. I used to kind of laugh at Chief a little bit back in the day. It's like, oh, my goodness, he's calling Becky so much. I know why. Becky. So, but she's one of the most valuable people in our department. She is, you know, and Chief Russ, when I talked about this today, how valuable our administrative assistants are. People don't get that until they've had one and all the work they do behind the scenes. Most people don't realize that the glue, the rock, everything you could throw at once, it's her. And a lot of people try to go to Becky. They're trying to go, when she'll be going through your supervisor, they're going to her because they know I can get an answer that quick. She likes to do it, too. You know, you mentioned department mom. They all have them. Very better. See, she's good at correcting, too. I mean, she is really good at that. But she does. She's been a rock for me. She's helped me tremendously through these last six months. It's been, she's been a huge help, especially with a lot of things we're trying to do. Hiring, there's a lot that, a lot of steps that we just don't know. Chief had it all up here, and we're trying to write it down so in case I stroke out here soon, she's got my back, so. So no, she's done a great job helping me, so. Thank you, Becky.
And it's older sister, not mom.
Exactly.
I couldn't believe you said that.
She says that all the time to me. Yeah, I got two more.
Good job.
Hit these.
So I'm gonna bring a special guest up for this as well. I'm doing something a little bit different. And the reason I'm doing it, because sometimes you wanna give respect. It's Chief Keller. This isn't for Chief Keller. He's thinking I'm trying to set him up. That's what he's trying. But we're not. So the first one we're gonna do is the civilian officer, or civilian of the year. Kelly, come on up. Civilian officer, it's a new position we just made. So civilian employee of the year award is awarded annually to civilian members of the department whose overall performance for prior year has contributed substantially to the mission of the department and whose conduct has demonstrated the core values of the department. The award is presented in the form of a plaque and certificate. Mike Hampton, Lieutenant Hampton, recommended that records, evidence custodian Kelly Galloway be nominated for civilian of the year twenty twenty-one. Lieutenant Hampton states that Kelly has worked hard numerous shifts over the past year to help cover dispatchers who are on vacation or training. Many times she has had to rotate from day-to-night shift and night-to-day, and then back to day shifts, all within a couple of weeks. The awards board committee agreed. Along with her record in evidence duties, she's trained new communications officers, helped cover shifts, and always maintains a positive attitude. Captain Graeber noted that even with her switching, sometimes multiple times a month, she always has a positive, friendly attitude and with a smile on her face. When officers are having trouble with cases, the first response is ask Kelly. Kelly will answer questions, teach officers what needs to be done, and never gets angry. She has known the values of our department every day by staying positive even a time of higher stress. So therefore, for her actions, efforts, and attitude demonstrated on a daily basis during the past twelve months, as nominated by Lieutenant Mike Hampton, recommended by the awards board, and approved by Chief of Police, Record Evidence Custodian, Kelly Galloway will be awarded the twenty twenty-one Michael A. Keller Civilian of the Year Award. We were gonna name the agility course after him, but I'm like, nah, that's, he hardly ever ran it, so why would you name something after him? He was very worried that we were gonna set him up because we'd done it for many years trying to set him up on stuff. So Troy, come on up, please. So this is for the Officer of the Year Award. Awarded annually to the officer, to a sworn member of the department whose overall performance for the prior year has contributed substantially to the mission of the department and whose conduct has demonstrated the core values of the department. The award is presented in the form of a plaque, ribbon, bar, and certificate. Lieutenant Mike Shiner wrote, during this past year, Detective Shiner, or I'm sorry, Snidderker. I just said Shiner, yeah. Has had many changes during his time in investigations and continued to do an outstanding job. Since March of twenty twenty-one, when he took over as investigation commander, Detective Snidderker had been assigned a hundred and twelve cases. Of those hundred and twelve cases, he disposed of ninety-seven cases. Out of those ninety-seven, Detective Snidderker had criminally charged forty-nine of them. Aside from doing his job as a detective, Detective Snidderker has taken on the responsibilities such as a taser instructor, bowler rap instructor, special Olympics coordinator, safe house board member, drone pilot. Snidderker gives a hundred percent in all these duties. Additionally, Detective Snidderker is always the first jumping in to help patrol, responding to calls when they are short, and is always trying to assist in catching individuals involved in progress calls. Detective Snidderker has worked several night patrols, shifts, assists with the patrol officers, and can take much needed time off. Snidderker is a team player, and his actions are motivated by bettering the department as a whole. Snidderker is a dedicated member of the department whose actions are solely motivated by bettering the department, making the community safer, and giving all responsibility everything he has. In addition, Lieutenant Shiner's comments, the awards board stated that Detective Snidderker can be counted on for any assigned task. Sergeant Sign stated that he was broken down on the highway while on his way home one day. He didn't know who else to call, so he called Detective Snidderker. Detective Snidderker was off duty, immediately stopped what he was doing, and went to assist Sergeant Sign. Therefore, his actions, efforts, and attitude demonstrated on a daily basis during the past twelve months, as nominated by Lieutenant Shiner and recommended by the awards board and approved by the Chief of Police, Detective Troy Snidderker is awarded the twenty twenty-one Chief Michael A. Keller Officer of the Year Award. Okay, that's, I'm all, I'm done with this one. Thank goodness. That's a lot of them. Stan Gibson and Bill Bishop, will you please come up? That's a lot of them. Stan Gibson and Bill Bishop, will you please come up?
Stan Gibson has been with us for 15 years. He runs some of our larger equipment. An example of him running the graders during one of the recent storms, he graded 13th and 21st for probably what seemed like endless hours in the middle of the night to keep the road open to traffic. I would point out that 21st has also got a hospital on it, and it's very important to keep open. He does this work, and he does it cheerfully and happily. It's an example of his dedication. His dedication to the job is greatly appreciated. I don't know how many more years you plan on being here, Stan, but apparently, according to everybody else, another 15 years is due.
So Bill's up here a little early. Usually, we do these awards the year after, the January after, or the year after they turn. So like if, in Bill's case, his 10-year anniversary was earlier this month, or last month, I believe it was, in January. And normally, it'd be the following January, get it. But we can't wait because Bill has announced he's going to be retiring April 8. Yes, sir. So I'm gonna give a little story about Bill because it's I feel like I need to. When I, when the street department came into one of my areas of responsibility, I thought, well, I would go check up. So I went out and I stopped at a job site. They're doing asphalt patches out on 13th Street. And I walked up, and as I was walking up, immediately came walking up to me was Bill, and he's holding an asphalt rake and says, here you go, buddy. Now, I didn't really know whether I should start raking or laugh. I can't remember what I did. But anyway, then every time I saw him for quite a while after that, every time I saw him, I said, hey, buddy. And I thought, man, I'm one of his good friends. And then I started hearing him talk to other people and him calling other people buddy, and I realized that maybe I wasn't such a good friend after all. Now, his supervisor Vern, who didn't want to come up and talk, but Vern asked him to stay on a little bit longer this year to help us get through the winter season. Hiring a good snowplow operator right now, and especially with winter coming on, was not going to be easy. And I am sure happy that you did stay on with us, Bill. It's been really appreciated this year, and it shows in our streets when storms hit. And I, and you know, another example of some of the work that you do, Bill, is you're a really good grader operator, and I know that you did a lot of the work out there to buy a tin addition. Immediately, like, I think we started maybe the day after we annexed that property, we went out there to start to fix the streets. And I will tell you, I'm very proud to say that I feel like those streets out there are 10 times better than they were the day we annexed them. And I think your work is proof of that. The other thing is that he has expressed a desire to come back and help us work winter storms in the future. And I guess all I got to say to that is, hey, buddy, you know where we keep the keys.
I thought I was special, man. He stopped me when I was running for mayor. Well, I stopped and irritated him. I think I was on my Harley, maybe.
Yeah, we sit in that canopy up down there, Bush Park Way in Central.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Can we have one more employee to recognize this year? He is not here, but Terry Jones is getting will be getting his 10-year award for 10 years of service. He's in the wastewater department. And so I guess that's all I really have to say about that. Premature clap, sorry.
So I'm going to speak really briefly about one person, and then I want Susan Runner to come up. Paula Bab is our accounting clerk, and she was not able to be here tonight, but she celebrated 10 years of service. She sits at the front desk, so many of you have interacted with her, and we are grateful for her 10 years of service. All right, come on up, Susan.
Without a cane, look at you.
So what that was in reference to, Susan passed her 15-year anniversary on November 27th, and she celebrated by taking a medical leave. And now she's back. And the reason that I think that's relevant is because Susan and I have a lot of conversations about something that's kind of been mentioned already today. There's some physicians at the city that do a lot of work, that people don't know what they do. And I want Susan to know, we know what she does. And we're going to talk a little bit about some of the things that she does, okay? And and we've noticed it even more in the last month while she's been gone, what she does. So she processes all the IRB paperwork from multiple businesses across town. She does a ton of work in the license area, and you might not even know that we have all of these licenses. Firework sales, trash haulers, cereal malt beverage, liquor licenses, massage therapists, and door-to-door sales. Susan is the kindness coordinator. What is the kindness coordinator, you ask? The kindness coordinator thinks about when babies are born, and she sends things like baskets to new moms and babies. She sends get well flowers when somebody has an accident. She sends funeral memorials when someone we love has passed. Susan is our kindness coordinator. Susan records the minutes of all of the city council meetings, the workshops. She administers all the open records requests. Susan handles food for monthly workshop meetings, and certainly, the governing body has noticed when she's here and when she's not. Susan.
Hey, we can talk normally now.
Susan is a party planner. We've already talked about, she plans the employee appreciation event every year. She also handles a potluck that the employees participate in in November, and she does a great job with those events. She coordinates the grant of public funds, which means she works with the not-for-profits that put their applications in every year so that money can be awarded by the city to help those not-for-profits continue to do their good work. She tracks all the mayoral appointments, and I have to tell you, that's a headache because some of them are for one years and two years and three-year terms, and sometimes people step down midterm, and it is a lot to keep track of, and Susan's on it. She acts as our city historian. So when a staff member or a governing body member says, why do we do what we do, and when did we start doing it that way? She starts poring through all those minutes, many that she didn't take for decades before she started, and is able to give us an answer. She makes travel and conference arrangements for the governing body. She puts items on the governing body members' calendars so that they are sure to show up when they are requested. She attends Chamber of Commerce events regularly, including ribbon cuttings and coffees. She puts together the packets that you see all of us working in our iPads on. She puts together the packets for all the council meetings and the workshops. She has, most recently, became the city's property liability insurance go-to person and handles the renewal, which we'll be doing at our next council meeting, and that is no small lift by itself. She participates actively in CCMFOA, which is the Professional Development Organization in the state for city clerks, and she is herself a master municipal clerk. Some of the governing body may not know that because she received that in 2019, and it's a major deal. She had to do a lot of additional hours of education, as well as document some of the things that she does in her job here at City of Andover. She is generally just the first point of contact for the city to many groups and many residents when somebody wants to know, when's that garage sale that the city coordinates, which really, we don't, the chamber does, but people still say it's the city's, so it's citywide. First weekend in June, you've heard it first. And so for 15 years of dedicated service to the City of Andover, I would like to thank you for all of your time.
Thank you.
I'll remember that next time you're throwing things at me on the second floor.
I will have to tell you all, if this happens, I get replaced, I'm no longer an angry woman.
Judging by you yelling at me today already a few times, disagree.
Happier.
Happier, right.
Just do what's right, Lance, and we'll be fine.
That's what she said. That's weird. Rick? I've got the the distinct pleasure tonight in congratulating your Director of Public Works and Utilities, Rick Lansworth, for 15 years of dedicated service to the City of Andover. That 15 years definitely doesn't consider the total years of public service that Rick has put in up to this point. What are we, 30 plus?
33, I believe.
So which means that Rick, some other city trained Rick for us, which is the way that we like it best. So 15 years is definitely a lot. Rick has accomplished a lot with the City of Andover with his 15 years with us. So professionally, Rick is the epitome of what a good employee is, and specifically, what a good senior level employee is. Everyone at City Hall has probably heard me say this, but I would much rather tell an employee to to slow down, to chill out a little, than it, than feel necessary to really drag work out of them. I tell Rick to chill out, slow down every once in a while. So he consistently demonstrates that that trait, which I think is very important for city employees, for all employees. He should be commended for his proven track record of identifying and implementing not only the operational things, that street department, wastewater department, stormwater, GIS, all the different departments that Rick oversees, that not only allow us to serve our internal customers, other city departments, but most importantly, our public, you know, our citizens, our residents. In addition to all of that kind of technical operational skill, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention and commend Rick for his leadership. Rick has departments or employees across five departments, if you will. But in the years that he's been in leadership of all of these, he's worked very hard to foster an environment that's collaborative, where all of his employees don't necessarily think of themselves as a as a separate department, but as an entire Public Works and Utilities, and even more importantly, citywide. That's all the professional stuff. I got some personal stuff. So for me, in my position, Rick is a is a is a trusted sounding board for me. He's oftentimes my first step when I have an idea whether it's related to Public Works and Utilities or not. He isn't bashful about telling me when I'm being a little aggressive, a little idealistic or just flat-out crazy. Generally, those are reserved for texts, but he will tell me when I'm being crazy again, and that happens quite a bit. He in hu, he humors my incessant need for details. He appreciates what we consider the beauty of a complicated spreadsheet, so if we could communicate in numbers on a spreadsheet, we could probably get that done. And importantly, I very much appreciate his ability to lighten the mood at City Hall, whether it's telling me or other people a travel, a sports, or parenting, or a story that encompasses all three somehow, when he recognizes that either myself or other colleagues are stressed, or when the work environment just gets a little heavy. For the record, if you guys don't know, Rick would also make a heck of a travel agent. So if you've got any recommend, or if you need a recommendation on where to travel, that's definitely, he is the resident City of Andover travel agent. So, Rick, congratulations. The City of Andover, both publicly and organizationally, is a better place with you around. And I have this underlined, at minimum, I look forward to the next 15 years. That's right.
Getting to getting to do that is one of the most humble things in my life, and I don't take it lightly. I really, it's a, it's what we do this for, and I appreciate all of y'all. Thank you very much. All right. 8-1, proclamation, ACHS swim team.
If you'd like to.
And Tim Berry's going to read this for us.
We can let the gallery clear out.
It's free meat at Walnut Valley.
All right. Whereas the Kansas 5A Boys State Swimming and Dive Meet was held on February 20th, 2022, in Topeka, Kansas, and whereas the Andover Central High School Boys Swim Team prevailed over its opponents, thus winning the 5A state championship. And whereas the Andover Central Boys Swim Team has a record of excellence, now with a state, another state championship, correct? And whereas the team's continued level of high achievement brings honor and pride to the Andover community, and whereas the team's success is due in large part to the teamwork and devotion of these dedicated students, PJ Domingo, Lucas Kruger, Beau Blankenship, Noah Kruger, Jackson Lee, Ethan Finney, Aiden Fushi, Garrett Kane, and Brian Nguyen. And now, therefore, be resolved by Mayor Ronnie Price of Andover, Kansas, with the concurrence of us city council assembled in regular session at Andover, Kansas, this day, 8th of March, 2022, hereby proclaim March 9th, 2022, and ACHS Boys Swim Team Day, and recognize the 2021-2022 Andover Central High School Boys Swim Team as state champions. Congratulations, guys.
What the boys are receiving now looks like maybe copies of the proclamation, Councilman Berry, and then pins for this indie.
Thank you, guys.
I just wanted the city or public to know when to watch.
Thank you all, appreciate it. 8-2 of the severe weather, severe weather awareness week.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Oh, are you just gonna read? Go ahead.
Whereas the severe weather and tornado season in Kansas has always been known as a potential dangerous time, historically producing property damage, injury, and even loss of life. And whereas during the during a recent activity, severe weather season 2019, the National Weather Service logged over 1,400 severe weather reports in Kansas, including more than 120 tornadoes, two of which occurred in Butler County, Kansas. And whereas everyone is potentially at risk during the severe weather and tornado season, which reaches its peak in Kansas between March and June. And whereas the National Weather Service, in conjunction with the state of Kansas and local jurisdictions, will be conducting a statewide tornado drill on Tuesday, March 8th at 10:00 a.m. And whereas the purpose of the severe weather awareness week is to heighten the public's understanding of the dangers associated with severe weather and tornadoes. Be it resolved by Mayor Ronnie Price with the concurrence of the Andover City Council assembled in regular session this 8th day of March, 2022, proclaim March 7th through March 13th, 2022, severe weather awareness week. 9-1, presentations, event request, festive ICT, Ms. Katie is going to talk to us about that.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And before I get into some details, I just want to remind everybody that the event I'm talking about tonight has not yet been announced. So Um, so I'm gonna talk in broad terms, um, for that reason. Um, so we, um, the amphitheater committee met last week to approve said event, um, in the park. And so what I'm, uh, before you today asking is just the, um, sort of things that the amphitheater committee can't approve because they're not the full council. So, um, the city is gonna partner with this group on this event, uh, for June twenty-fifth. I can tell you guys the date, but, um, and, uh, they're planning to announce hopefully next week. So, um, they just wanna get all of this squared away before that happens. And so today, what I'm, we're, well, they're asking, we're asking as the city, um, is to approve sale of goods on public land, food trucks, um, and then, uh, closing of the park, so. If you have any general questions, I can answer.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve, do I say the name that's there?
Yeah, that's fine.
Festival ICT's request to allow for the sale of goods on public land, allow food trucks to vend in Central Park, and approve the request to close Central Park south of Bush Parkway exclu- excluding the dog park from one PM to midnight on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Tim, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mike, right? Any further discussion? It's gonna be pretty cool. Be on the lookout for that announcement. Yep. Big deal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Consent agenda, ten-one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need a motion for the severe weather awareness? Okay.
Okay.
We don't, or we do? Thanks, Shelby.
Okay, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve consent agenda items nine point one through nine point six, as presented.
Second.
That was Tim Berry.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Just to be clear, we did have some changes in the agenda numbering today. So it, the consent agenda is ten point one to ten point seven.
Okay, thank you.
We're good.
The reading coordinator.
All right, um, eleven, eight oh four West Harry Street, eleven point one annexation, and Justin Constantino's gonna talk to us.
Good evening, mayor and council. The subject property is located in South Andover, just west of South Andover Road, at eight oh four West Harry Street. It's the second agenda, or excuse me, the first agenda item that you will be hearing regarding this address this evening. The second one will be zoning, but first we have to annex the property into the city. Uh, the subject property is one parcel containing an existing single-family residence on approximately two acres. The current AG forty agricultural district is a Butler County zoning designation. Existing public streets and utilities are available adjacent to the property and are likely extensions to serve the property. Uh, at their February fifteenth meeting, the Planning Commission recommended that the city council annex this property into the city. Uh, the applicant has submitted an annexation petition, which is included in your packets. That includes my, uh, presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What other properties then are around that that, I guess, why does one property just say, I wanna be annexed, and then not the others that are around it?
So the applicant's intent is ultimately to, uh, develop, uh, properties in the area. The area, um, adjacent to the subject property right here is Meadowbrook Second. That was recently, uh, zoned as a single-family neighborhood. And ultimately, the applicant has expressed their desire to develop the surrounding area. Uh, this is sort of the first step in that process. This subject property here has a single-family home located on the subject property, and, uh, the applicant has expressed their desire to keep that as a single-family home while, uh, this property around it develops over time. So it's kind of the first step in their overall process to make sure that area is properly annexed, zoned, and pla- a- annexed, zoned, and then platted. So, uh, that's kind of the first step in the process. This one's just kind of a unique outlier that's likely going to remain the same.
Thanks, Justin.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt an ordinance annexing the subject property generally located at eight oh four West Harry Street in the city of Andover, Kansas.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five, five zero. Eleven-two zoning amendment, eight oh four West Harry Street, Z dash twenty twenty-one dash oh four. This is an application to change the zoning district, but this is an application to change the zoning district classification from agricultural AG forty to a single-family SF-two, single-family medium-density district on the property generally located at eight oh four West Harry Street, Andover, Kansas. Before we proceed, will there, come on. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'd like to ask council if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have a conflict of interest.
No.
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 I will now ask council if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communication prior to this agenda item, which they would like to share.
No.
Has the city clerk received any protest petitions on this case?
I have not received any protest petitions, um, since the hearing at the Planning Commission.
I will, I now ask the council members if they have received copies of the drafts minutes of the Planning Commission for February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, which summarized the hearing of the case.
Yes.
Yes.
I now call on city zoning administrator, Leslie E. Mangus, to provide us with a report on this case.
That's me. This case is, as Jason, as Justin framed up for you, is a two-acre lot on, uh, West Harry Street. It's, uh, adjacent to the Meadowbrook subdivision owned by the applicant, as well as a, a tract of land surrounding it, about thirty-five acres to the north of the, the subject property. Simple request to zone the property for single-family residential uses. The, the applicant intends to, uh, plat this property to separate it off of the property adjacent to the north. And, and this zoning allows that to, to be separated down as low as a twenty, ten thousand square foot lot. In this case, he's actually just asking for the two-acre lot. Planning Commission heard this, uh, request at the February fifteenth meeting and recommends approval.
So you have any writ- written communications been received? No? Clerk should be asked to read them. No?
I have not received anything, no.
Thank you. Does the application, applicant wish to present any new information?
Uh, Michael Edwards, I'm an agent for the applicant with K.E. Miller Engineering, and we don't have any more information to add. Okay, thank you.
We would like to welcome anyone interested in this agenda item and lay out a few ground rules. Please come to the podium, give your name, address. Comments from individual members of the public will be limited to three minutes. The governing body has provided the draft, been provided the draft minutes, and the video of the public hearing has been made available. So please limit your comments to any information not previously shared at the public hearing held on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Does anyone from the public have any information? Does the applicant have any further response to the public comment? Nope. Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case, you have received an outline of the choices provided under the Kansas, I'm, I'm sorry, under the state statutes for council action, KSA twelve dash seven fifty-seven C. How do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the Planning Commission's findings of fact and recommendation for approval for zoning case Z dash two zero two one dash zero four, and approve an ordinance changing the zoning district classification from the Butler County AG dash four zero agriculture district to the SF dash two, single-family medium-density district on the property located at eight oh four West Harry Street.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a quick question. Maybe Jenny can answer JT or Les. Does this go to the county now, or we've annexed it, it's ours, or does the county have to approve it, or? I'm just curious.
There, there are no approvals required for annexation. Because it's a petition of a hundred percent of the property.
Okay, cool. Just, just curious. Thanks.
Okay, uh, where was I? Twelve and thirteen. Okay, six four point one, six oh one, South Andover Road, zoning amendment Z twenty twenty-two dash oh two.
Miss, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to return case two dash two zero two two dash zero two to the Planning Commission for reconsideration of the general revisions submitted by the applicant.
Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor, we'll see this next, um, next meeting. No?
Yes, Planning Commission will take it up on, uh, March fifteenth, and it'll be back to you at your next meeting.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five, five zero. Village Crossing Planned Unit Development Preliminary PUDs Amendment Village Crossing Z D dash twenty twenty-two dash oh one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to return the case two dash two zero two two dash zero one to the Planning Commission for reconsideration of the text amendment submitted by the applicant.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Preliminary, fourteen one, preliminary PUD agreement, Cloud City Subdivision Z dash twenty twenty-two dash oh three. This is application, this is an application requesting an amendment to the Cloud City Subdivision Preliminary Planned Unit Development plan to allow for the use of municipal fire station. Reduce the rear yard setback on the east side of the subject property from eighty feet to thirty-five feet. Increase the building height allowance from thirty-five feet to forty-five feet. Increase the number of access points to Andover Road from two to three, and allow access across the Platter Reserve A to Minnehaw Avenue at the property generally located at the intersection of North Andover Road and East Minnehaw Avenue, Andover, Kansas. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'd like to ask city council if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have a conflict of interest.
No.
No.
I will now ask the council if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communication prior to this agenda item, which they would like to share.
No.
No.
Has the city clerk really received any protest petitions on this case?
I have not received any protest petitions since it was heard at the, uh, Planning Commission.
I now ask council members if they have all received copies of the drafts minutes of the Planning Commission for February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, which summarizes the hearing on this case.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I now call on, uh, the city zoning administrator Les Mangus to provide us with a report on this case.
Thanks, mayor. You did a great job of summarizing all the changes to this planned unit development. Uh, the Planning Commission held the required public hearing on this amendment on February fifteenth. It's, it's really a basic change centered around the use of that property for a fire station and trying to accommodate fire trucks in and out in that large public building. At the, the end of that public hearing, they did unanimously recommend the change to the planned unit development and, uh, upcoming change to the final PUD plan that you should see at your next meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Have any, we have not received any communications, correct?
The office of the city clerk has not received anything, no.
Okay, thank you. Does this applic- does the applicant wish to present any new information?
I'm Lori Gethridge with GLMV, and we have no additional information at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. We would like to welcome everyone interested in this agenda item and lay out a few ground rules. I don't like the way that's worded. I don't like the way that's worded. Please come to the podium and give your name and address. Comments from individual members of the public will be limited to three minutes. The governing body has been provided the draft minutes, and the video of the public hearing has been made available. So please limit your comments to information not previously shared at the public hearing held on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Does anyone from the public have any comments or any new information? Right. Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case, you have received an outline of the choices provided under the Kansas statutes for council action, KSA twelve, seven fifty-seven C. How do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the Planning Commission's findings of fact and recommendation for approval for zoning case Z dash two zero two two dash zero three, and approve an ordinance amending the Cloud City Subdivision Preliminary Planned Unit Development plan.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I, I wouldn't insert here, and this is the same with the previous zoning change we made. People aggrieved by the final decision of the council on this matter do have thirty days after today's action, and they can appeal that decision to district court.
Thank you. Twenty twenty-four, twenty thirty-three Comprehensive Plan Professional Service Agreement. Justin Constantino is gonna talk to us about that.
Good evening again, mayor and council. The, uh, city of Andover Comprehensive Plan defines the general location, character, extent, and relationship of future land uses within the city of Andover and the greater planning area. The plan addresses desired land use pattern and public policies related to infrastructure, transportation, housing diversity, and urban design. The Comprehensive Plan is one of the most important guiding documents utilized by the city, and it is used by staff on a daily basis. The city has historically used a ten-year planning horizon for our comprehensive plans, and the current comprehensive plan is set to expire in December of twenty twenty-three. Staff released a request for proposals for a new ten-year comprehensive plan running through twenty thirty-three, uh, in October of twenty twenty-one. The city received proposals from six qualified consultant firms by the application deadline of December eighth, twenty twenty-one. The proposals were reviewed and evaluated by a five-member selection committee, consisting of council member Shelby Carceloie, uh, planning commissioner, um, Vance Garwood, and three staff members, including assistant city member Lance Anstott, uh, director of community development, Les Mangus, and myself. These six proposals were ranked based on, uh, their project approach, content and timeline, qualifications, uh, past project experience, client resources, project fee structure, and their cost estimate. The Olson Studio of Kansas City, Missouri, uh, received the highest ranked score by the selection committee. The new comprehensive plan will be developed with significant public input from members of the community, including, uh, students, staff, residents, the business community. And a, uh, uh, comprehensive plan steering committee will ultimately be formed to assist with that plan. One hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was included in the twenty twenty-two adopted budget for the comprehensive plan, and staff is requesting that the city council approve an agreement an agreement with the Olson Studio of Kansas City, Missouri in the amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. That concludes my report and I'm available for any questions.
Anyone? Yes, sir.
Sorry. I move to approve an agreement with the Olson Studio, Kansas City, Missouri, related to the development of the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty, sorry, twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-three city of Andover Comprehensive Plan in the not to exceed amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second. Any further discussion?
I, I do have one quick question. It says, related to the development, does that include printing and, I mean, are they gonna get us the plan? Is that what this entails?
Yes, they will develop a com- a, a physical comprehensive plan document, including a future land use map. So basically what we have now, what we will be what we are going to be received, but adopted for a, a new ten year.
Perfect, okay.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I may have missed it, Justin. Why did, why is this then only nine years?
Um, basically, well, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-three, it, it's, it's basically a default ten-year plan. Um, it includes the ten years, but.
Ten-four.
Yeah.
Excuse me. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
On-call traffic. On-call tra- traffic engineering, uh, sixteen one Professional Services Agreement. Les will speak to us on this.
For many years, we've had a, an arrangement with Trans Systems Corporation to review projects and situations on an on-call basis that, uh, is, uh, is called for by the staff on a work order. This includes things like, uh, the review of the traffic study that was submitted for the fire station to look at the plat of the Green Valley Greens eleventh edition that involves the Backage Road, coordination of engineering on Backage Road with the Heritage Project. Ricks used them for, uh, adjustments of traffic signal timings when it's necessary at the busy intersection. So it's, it's an on-call basis. Last year, we only used about twenty-nine thousand dollars of the fifty thousand dollars that was, uh, approved for the year, but it's a very necessary service because we don't have that.
First, I'd like to say that Transition, Trans Systems has done an excellent job over the years, uh, with us and, uh, but I'd like to recommend approval for the twenty twenty-two on-call engineering agreement with Trans Systems Corporation, which is Kansas, and in the not to exceed amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. South Andover Road. South Andover Fire Station Construction Manager C M A R Agreement, C M R Agreement. Seventeen one, correct?
Yep, that's me. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm excited to, I'm, okay, uh, might be overstating. I'm happy to bring you a, uh, set of contract agreements, uh, with Crossland Construction. What we're looking for this evening is to culminate all of our contract work with JT and Crossland and, uh, have the city agree to hire Crossland as our construction manager. As you know, this is a new process for the city. Um, we've never done this before, so we're working our way through it and, um, it's had its challenges, but I will tell you that Crossland, from the day we told them that, uh, we were hoping to work the contract and select them as the, as our construction manager, they have been with us absolutely every step. Uh, they've been absolutely valuable to the planning process and I fully believe that had we used our standard process, uh, seven and a half million dollar budget that we have today, we would have probably brought you back a plan that would have priced out at ten or eleven million dollars. Uh, that is not a promise that we're going to come in, in budget, but I will tell you that we're working very aggressively to make that happen. And, uh, with GLMV's leadership and definitely with Crossland's leadership, for example, we've cut about six thousand square feet out of the original plan we had for the fire station. And I feel like every one of those cuts has been the, a right sizing of the project, not a minimizing of the project. Uh, Crossland has been with us and been absolutely valuable in every one of those discussions because they're able to tell us not only what's happening in the market today, but they have experience building fire stations. Uh, we found that out when we went through the RFQ process. We had multiple RFQs come back. We interviewed the final two. They were very close, both local firms. We were very excited about, to have both of them. Councilman Barry was nice enough to come with us on that RFQ interview process. And at the end of the day, uh, the process culminated in Crossland being selected. Then we opened the actual bid packet and they ended up being low bid as well. Uh, you have both of those documents, uh, that were interviewed, the bid packet from both of them, and you have the full RFQ proposal in your packet from Crossland Construction. Uh, the financial implications of what we're talking about tonight is we're agreeing to pay them one point eight five percent of the construction cost as their C M R fee. So at our current budget, that would be about ninety-four thousand dollars roughly. We are, have, this, uh, discussion tonight does not include actual building of the building. We will bring you back an amendment after we set the guaranteed maximum price. So they are going, they are continuing to work with us and we're actually gonna get our first preview of what the pricing looks like on March twenty-third. Um, we're gonna work, continue to work the processes and as we come with a guaranteed maximum price, then they will also, uh, in that amendment, be talking about their general conditions in any labor. That's why the financial implications includes that we anticipate this to be around five hundred thousand dollars for the total project. All we're talking about is a second. Let me invite DJ McClenny, who is the local manager for Crossland, up. That's just for a little bit.
Thanks, Chief. DJ McClenny, the Vice President for Crossland Construction. Uh, I am happy and excited to be here, Chief. So the process has been great so far. Uh, as a, as a, uh, member of this community, uh, couldn't be more thrilled than to, to be here and, and be part of this project. So open for questions, should you have any?
So, Mr. Mayor, we, we both stand for questions and hopefully be able to answer.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of questions. On the one point eight five, that's on the construction costs. So how do we keep construction costs down? If, uh, are you talking about the, I mean, how do we keep it down if you're making money off of that money that we use? So.
I'll answer first and then I'll let DJ have, uh, an opportunity as well. So one thing I've learned about this C M R process, this then is different than our other process is, um, normally we just hire the contractor and we've agreed on the price. And in this, you're gonna see the subcontractor bids. This is the most transparent process, uh, that I know of. So you will have an opportunity to look at all of the subcontractor bids, bids when we bring them back. Uh, that way, we can keep the costs down. And then DJ, Councilman Henry has a good point. How do we, you're getting paid a percentage. So how do we keep the costs down as we go through the process?
And a percentage fee is, uh, it works similar to just like hiring an architect or an engineer as a professional service. So, um, the go always is to ensure that the project remains under budget. Um, but really, if you go over your budget, there is no project. So there's really no incentive to, to keep, to keep raising that, that price. Uh, certainly is a local tax. There's also not a incentive to raise that price. Throughout the process, we are, um, uh, budgeting kind of before it even gets drawn. So that's a big part of the, the meetings that Chief talked about. It'll be, we wanted to sign this flooring product and we're talking about the four or five product, products that could go there and which would be the most cost effective and lifespan and life cycles and those sort of things. So there's a constant effort throughout the design, uh, to, to ensure that the pricing stays where it needs to. And in this current pricing condition, it's a lot about this right sizing and ensuring that, that, hey, you know, we need to make sure that we're really including in here what we need to because the, the pricing is kind of all over the board. So we're really, our job is to identify that pricing and those products and availability before it even gets down to a set of documents, before it gets drawn.
Homer, I, more, and not just more than once, but many times I have heard DJ say, hold on. We can't afford that. Let's don't be talking about this. How about we do it a different way? Let's come up with an idea for a different way. So I've really appreciated that about the process, to have him there at the table. And like I described when we got started, uh, the way we did this process, we have an architect working for us and if we approve these contracts, we also have a construction manager working for us. And it's a triad and he's able to hold the architect and the owner accountable, right? To keep the project on track. And then the architect is able to do the same from the other side. So there's a lot of oversight.
Homer, I will, um, concur with, I've been sitting in on the meetings, the design meetings. DJ is just phenomenal when it comes to, hey, we wanna do this. He's like, wait, time, like Chief Russell says, timeout. You know, we can't afford this, but we can afford this or we can do that. Instead of, you know, it's kinda like when you build a house. You know, you wanna do marble floors, but you can really only afford laminate. So, you know, DJ is the one that kind of has pointed us in the correct direction.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one more question.
Yes, sir.
DJ, this is maybe more in, in regards to staffing at Crossland. Is, is that, is Crossland local to Kansas, local to Wichita? Um, will you be subbing it out? Do you have, you know, boots on the ground here that are doing the laminate flooring and that kind of stuff in Chief's office or what are we doing?
He's getting sealed concrete.
Is he getting marble?
So in general, Crossland is a, we're a Midwest firm. We're the, I think we're close to the sixtieth largest in the nation, but we are a, a Kansas, uh, company. We're from, our corporate office is in Columbus, Kansas, just south of Pittsburgh. Uh, we've been here in Wichita for ten years. I've been here for five years. Um, all of our staff is local. We're eighty-five, uh, local staff. And, um, of course, a big part of what we do, and we talked about this early on, is trying to ensure that local dollars stay local. So there'll be a tremendous amount of effort ensuring that there's some, um, some public sessions about, hey, this is the kind of work. Are you interested in it? Um, does the work need, does the packages need broken up? So that way smaller contractors could have an opportunity at it that maybe wouldn't, um, if it was of a much larger. So really, the goal here is to, again, ensure that local dollars stay local and, um, we're a large self-perform general contractor. Uh, we will bid on the trade packages, but it's not to say that we would get awarded those. It, every component of the work is publicly bid out. And so we will bid on the things that we self-perform, which would be concrete, steel erection, rough carpentry. Uh, we'll be bidding those packages just like, uh, everybody else in the market will be and then bringing those recommendations back, back to, to Chief and, and the council to approve.
So I guess that brings up another question that I have. How do you keep that fair? If you know kind of what it's gonna cost, how do you keep it fair to everyone else in the, um, bid process?
Well, some of that's just in the process that you go through. So our bid is turned in first and then everybody else is. And it's an open bid process. So we probably open them at the, at the fire station or wherever we need to and it's a public opening. So all the bidders come in, you open, you read aloud, everybody's bidding from the same bid package and then a, uh, then a recommendation is made by, by us to award one way or the other.
Okay, thank you.
City staff's involved in that every step of the way, correct? Yeah.
City staffs in all of these meetings, working with Crossland and GLMV.
Mr. Barry as well.
Correct.
So, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move, uh, to approve A one three three, A two zero one and supplementary condition agreements with Crossland Construction Company Incorporated, Wichita, Kansas, for construction manager at-risk C M R, C M A R services for the fire station projects and authorize the mayor to sign the same.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, DJ. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you.
Uniform Public Fence Code Order Related, eighteen one, I'm sorry. Uh, eighteen one, Order Related to Section seven point five A two of the U P O C. And Jenny.
This item was brought to our attention yesterday. Um, League of Kansas Municipalities contacted the city attorneys across the state and the city managers and administrators across the state. I know about what I've put in your memo for you and that it, um, the need to take action relates to a federal lawsuit. But you have an esteemed city attorney here tonight who has more breadth of knowledge on the topic and I will turn it over to him and let him explain what we're doing here.
So really, this is very simple. The Kansas Legislature enacted a law, uh, shortly after the last, uh, presidential election that prohibited certain activities that made getting a mail-in ballot more convenient. There were a number of changes the law made. For instance, uh, if, if, if you were sending a mail-in ballot application to someone, you have to, in at least a fourteen-point font, say who you are on the, on the envelope and on the letter. And one of the things that this, uh, law prohibited was the filling out of the application for a mail-in ballot by someone other than the voter, such that all you had to do was sign it and mail it in, in a pre-addressed envelope. The Kansas Legislature wants to make you fill out the application for a mail-in ballot yourself. The United States District Court in November said, man, that, that, that requirement needs to be enjoined. Uh, the arguments were made on a First Amendment basis and, and, um, uh, they considered the broad, the, the law too broad as it relates to the United States Constitution to just prohibit, uh, somebody from filling out your mail-in ballot application. We're not talking about the ballot now. We're talking about the application for you, such that all you have to do is sign it, uh, what was, was too far reaching. But haven't really made the decision yet. They just simply enjoined the application of the law until the courts figure it out. Unfortunately, uh, uh, being good stewards, the Kansas League of Municipalities incorporated that law into your Uniform Public Fence Code and made it a crime to, uh, fill out a, a ballot application for someone, um, and, and just allowing them to sign it themselves. And, and that law has been enjoined on the state level. And so as a result, really to keep the cities out of the fray, we don't wanna be enforcing seven point five A two, which, which prohibits, uh, as a matter of law, the filling out of an application for a ballot for someone. I haven't asked Chief Buchanan, but he can assure me that our SWAT team is not actively out seeking those people who are, who are, are filling out those ballots. And, and in fact, we know of, we know of no enforcement currently being undertaken, but to, as, as I said last night to another city, or just to keep us out of the fray, the league has recommended, and I think it's a good idea, that the mayor issue an order that just says that specific tiny little thing, seven point five A two, is not gonna be enforced in the city of Andover during the period of this being enjoined. The mayor can do that. I think the city council, I'm recommending the city council support him in doing that by making a motion and a second, because you did approve the U P O C. And so for him to just order somebody not to enforce the law is, it's within his power, but it's a little unusual. So the recommendation tonight is to authorize that, um, he, uh, sign this order. That's the motion we're looking for. And then at the bottom of that, there's three email addresses that the clerk's gonna send it to so that we're out of the fray on that and everybody knows that in Andover, we're not actively enforcing that law. Does that, does that explain it well enough?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so are we agreeing that you cannot fill out an application for someone?
No, we're not agreeing to anything. All, all we're saying is that, um, because we're enjoined from doing so by the U S District Court, we're not gonna enforce this law until the courts decide whether or not the Kansas law is enforceable. We're, we're not, we're not saying it. We're, we're not, we're not saying it's good or bad or indifferent. We're just saying that we're going to, we're going to comply with this court order so that nobody's interested in us as it relates to this topic until it's ultimately decided. And actually, the order that I've written, if the court were to ultimately decide that this is just an AOK thing, then the law would go back into force. The, the order says during the period of the injunction, we won't be enforcing it. So we're, we're not really deciding whether it's right or wrong or indifferent. We're just saying that in Andover, we're not going to enforce it right now until we know whether or not it's ultimately approved. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign an order stating the city of Andover, Kansas shall not enforce 7.5A2 of the Uniform Public Fence Code.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. 19-1, executive session, land acquisition, KSA 75-4319B6.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to recess in an executive session for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property per KSA 75-4319B6. Session include governing bodies, city attorney and associate, city administrator, director of community development, and assistant city administrator. The open meeting will resume at 8:47.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Sir.
I move to come out of executive session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, we say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. All right. We need no action, correct? All right, member items.
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Yes.
Had a long conversation with Jenny today. And this was over the Butler County property tax increase. That was average thirteen point eight. Is that right? Thirteen point something? It's a lot. My main comment. Well, first, I agree that property has gone up. And that how they determine it is probably right. But my big complaint and the ones I'm hearing from, from people are it's not a good time. I mean, we're going through, yeah, their, their, things have increased on their side. It's increased everywhere. We all know that. And, you know, but on the average of thirteen percent increase, I don't think they have increased thirteen percent. There's probably, it's probably lower than that. And with looking at five dollar gas coming soon or higher and inflation's out of, out of everywhere and food prices and yes, I do agree that the property is probably assessed correctly. I'm not, not complaining about that. I just think it's just a bad time. And that I like to, you know, see if the county could adjust something on their end, which would probably be mills. But it's something for them to consider. You know, with a thirteen point eight increase, there may be X amount of mills that they want to restore back. So. Fourteen point eight.
Yeah, I think it was thirteen percent in cities and fifteen percent in rural. So it was increased higher for rural communities.
So that's just my comment that it's just a bad time for them to do this. It doesn't look good. Even though that the, they're, they're right on, you know, legally, how they're adjusting it. But it just doesn't fit in what's going on right now. So that's just my comment.
My house hadn't changed one iota in twenty years, other than some stuff I've done to the inside of it. It just appraised recently for ninety five thousand dollars more than the initial price I paid for. Streets haven't been done. Truckload, isn't it?
I jumped forty five K, so. Well, mine was.
Twenty years.
Mine was fourteen percent.
Still, it ain't been painted on the, it's brick. It's, it's, it is what it is. It's the same thing as when I moved into the darn thing. And so that's what they're valuing my taxes off of. And I, my house has not had major improvements, period. You know? It's just, and Will spoke to it and I, and I can't remember how he, how he, how he, how he leveled it or however you want to say it.
So at the risk of sounding Pollyanna, if you do go to any of the apps that you can get on your phone and pull up your own home and see the value of your home, if you were to sell it, it's probably worth more than what that notice just said to you that came to your home. I haven't found anyone yet whose Zillow value, to use a brand name, is lower than what those assessments are. So what Will spoke to at the state of the community, Mr. Mayor, was that the appraiser's office, it's, it's a math problem. They pull in comps and they see what the homes are going for that are comparable to your home. And now it's actually quite easy because it is all computerized and in real time as those homes are selling. And we've all heard the stories. I have multiple employees who cannot get into a home because they cannot act fast enough. They don't have enough cash and they can't go without an inspection because they need to have a mortgage and qualify for it. But there are people that are buying these homes, tens of thousands of dollars, over asking price, no inspection, sight unseen, we're hearing, and that drives up the price. And this is the impact of that. So what your county appraiser does is they say, if this is the comparable price for this home, then that's what your mill will be based on. And so it is based on the true value of your home. There is an appeal process. So if someone feels like that is not what my home is worth, I could not get this much if I were to try to sell it, then there is an appeal process through the county that taxpayers can go through.
I did that, matter of fact, in when I was still over on Prosperity, and that's probably been twenty three years ago. And the comparables to my house were not even close. So I did get them to back it down.
Yeah.
And everybody in my neighborhood, well, the older folks believe it, there's people older than me in there, back, back then, they were doing it dang near yearly.
Yep.
You know?
I do mine every year. I appeal every year.
Yeah. So you can fight it, but it's a, and, and Will made a statement that it's kind of stuck with me, said, to now realtors don't post asking price, they post starting price. You know, so it's a different dynamic than, than we're used to. But, and, and believe it or not, but all the realtors that I've talked to actually use Zillow to start out. That's what your house worth, you know? I'm like, really? You know, and the county used to be a lot higher than, than the appraisal cost back twenty five years ago. But now they've, they've got it dialed in to where it just, it's hard.
Yeah, it was just a, such a large increase in one year. I mean, if, if they could have looked at this and, and done it a little bit at a time like they have been doing, then it, no one would probably be complaining. But I, I really see a lot of complaints that are, will be going to the county on this. And the timing is just not good. Coming out of pandemic, people losing their jobs or getting, trying to get jobs back. Inflation like crazy. It's just, it doesn't look good.
And I'd be, I'd be willing to bet my lunch money that half the people that live in this town from back in the day like myself probably can't even afford to live in this town if they had to move into it today. You know, it's just, it's just what it is.
Well, I had a friend sell his house the other day and he, you know, he got a little more than asking cost for it. But he also said that he couldn't buy anything else here in town for what he got. So.
Yeah, and I will speak a little bit to that. I mean, it's a supply demand problem, really. There's less than six hundred homes in the entire Wichita MSA on the market right now. So when you have that little supply, that's exactly what you're seeing. I mean, it is that kind of first economics class that probably everybody's taken that says when the supply is so high and the demand is so small, then the prices go up.
So they do this every seven years, if I remember correctly. Jenny? It's all right. We get it. So every seven years they go in and if, if I remember reading that correctly, the prices has to do it every seven years?
It's every three.
Every three, okay. So if the prices fall.
And I, I've gone back, you can go online. That's a really good point. I mean, I've seen mine go down. If you go to bucoks.com, B U C O K S dot com, and you put in the G I S mapping section, you can put your address in and you can see the history and you can see, and, and I know there are years that it's gone down. So that might be a worthwhile thing to look at.
I think this is just my opinion. One thing Butler County needs to do, in my opinion, and I'm not talking about Butler County Commission, I'm talking about cities as a whole need to get together and start bringing, bringing in more industry. You know, because that's, that's how you, you know, that's how you, how, how we're going to fix our taxes, going up over and over and over and over. And so Jenny and I have sat down with the mayor and city administrator in Augusta. And I'm talking to a gentleman over there who's highly motivated about getting things turned around. I'm meeting with the mayor of Eldorado this week and, and see if we can't figure out a way to make it attractive for, but no one. Here's the problem. We're on more standees. We, we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to grow. And if you don't grow, then everything goes up. You know what I mean? You can't tax empty spaces, which is most of our county, the biggest county. And there's a lot of opportunities out there for smaller, and I tell, I tell them this. I tell Augusta this, I tell Eldorado this, there's, we don't, we're not in competition. There's things that we can't do here in town. There's things that they can do that we can't do as far as industry, right? So it would behoove us if we all figure out a way to work together. And it's not an overnight problem. It's a long-term problem to, to get people to work together. And in fact, we've put in a deal for a base grant just to do that very thing. And nobody in Andover is gonna. We're more white collar than we are blue collar. So there's things that Augusta and Eldorado could probably do. And, and we work together as a, as a accounting instead of a each individual deal, we might be able to change things for, for our children's children, but not for us. So I'll get off my soapbox, but.
I do, hey Donna, with the increase of fourteen point eight percent, is that's going to help us, correct? Okay.
Just like everybody, every homeowner's expenses have gone up, the city's expenses have gone up too. You know, our cost of living, so to speak, has also gone up. The gas costs, everything, electricity. So this is our only means without raising the mill levy is if valuation does go up, it allows us to keep up with those expenses as well.
Buck, you have enough bicycles?
Mine went up seventeen point five.
That's a lot.
I still, I still beat you.
So, so when, so when we get these, this extra and we realize that the, really the only thing that affected us was fuel mostly.
It's everything. It's the fuel, the cost of employees, the cost of benefits. I think across the board, I don't think there's an expense category that hasn't gone up.
Did we not take that into consideration in our, in our budget we just approved?
Well, we're looking at the twenty twenty three budget. That's where this is going to affect us, not on the twenty twenty two. It will affect us on the twenty twenty three budget.
I should know better and keep my mouth shut. But an example, we, yeah, obviously I don't. We went to buy foam today because as you know, we've been using a ton of foam on all these fires. The last time we bought foam, it was eighty five dollars a bucket. It's a hundred and twenty five dollars a bucket because he held the price. It's actually a hundred and thirty seven dollars a bucket now. I could not believe that. Just six months ago. Well, October is when we bought our last round. Crazy.
And I'll add the price of paper is doubled per case from the last time I purchased. And we purchased it a pallet at a time. So it's gone from thirty dollars to sixty dollars a case.
I mean, I, I, I deal with this every day in, in construction and I, I see the prices being going up for the last year and a half. So I completely understand that. But my whole thing about the taxes is just it wasn't a good timing for, for this. If they would, would have waited next year, let's say they did half this year and half the next year, people probably wouldn't have, you know, seen that and seven percent increase or eight percent. Or nine for you, you know, the next year another nine. But I just think they, they just jumped too quickly, just like gas went up fifty cents in two days. So, you know, that's what they did. And I think they could have, even though it's state law, I think they could have done something different.
And that's one thing that we, the conversations we're having about our utilities, we don't want to do it all at one time and we don't want to wait till we have to do it all at one time. So, so that's the thing we have to focus on as a, as a governing body and, and a staff is, is the things that we can influence. I, I, I have, I don't even look to price gas. I gotta fill my truck up, you know, ninety one bucks last time. I only focus on the things that I can, that I can influence in my, in my budget. And same thing with the city. Man, and I, I don't think, I hope that, I hope that the people of the, uh, uh, citizen in Andover know how hard people work to keep things cost effective, the governing bodies staff. It's, it's, it's a balancing act and, and I'm telling you, man, this city's fixing to grow a lot. You know, and I'm, I'm excited, I'm excited about it. And I'm also nervous because it's going to grow faster than, than we can staff and that we can do this. And it's just going to be all hands on deck, man, for all of us. It's coming faster, faster than you think. And when it does, we'll have to, just like tonight, you gotta make hard decisions, man. But I agree, Mike, that they seemed like they could have done it incrementally, but I, but I don't know what they're.
Yeah.
I don't know. So, all right. Anyone else?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, on a, on a lighter note, had my son's eight, eight birthday, eight, eight-year-old birthday party this last weekend. And we ordered cookies for the, the fire and the police department and, and they dropped him off the police department and then, or I'm sorry, they dropped him off at the fire department. Shout out to the firemen for giving them a big tour and stuff. They were really impressed with some of the contraptions they had. I thought these were new contraptions. Asked Chief Russell, he said, no, we got these in like the nineties. And I was like, oh, okay, well, not that big of a deal. And it didn't come out of any budget, right? Did you get the leftovers, everything over to the police department like they asked? Okay.
Sure.
All right. Just want to make sure. And then on, on the note, when we're talking about the budget and the finance, I, I don't know if it was, I think it was after last meeting about the grant that Lance and staff had worked on. Lance was, who else helped you with the grant as far as putting that together and?
It definitely was a team approach. I think Rick, Les, Jenny, we had some outside assistance, management intern.
So I mean, in grants, we don't have to pay back right now. We don't have those, correct? I mean, there's no response to them yet. But there's a lot of work that goes into just applying for a grant. And so let the, let the citizens know that it's not, not like we're just, you know, earning a paycheck here. The staff's just earning a paycheck. They are doing things. And to Rick's point earlier with, I believe it was Bill and the grading crew. I mean, do yourself a favor and go look at a grater, just even through the window and all the, I mean, if you can't even drive a manual, good luck driving a grater. And then to the mayor's point, last meeting, if you do get a chance to, some of us maybe aren't all interested in construction and that kind of stuff, but take a look at, at the heritage and, and when those drills are going in. He made that point last meeting. I went out and did sit there and watch those guys drill, drill, drill. You know, just one hole. And it, and it was, it was interesting. And there's a lot of work that goes into this stuff. So it's not like it just comes. We get an article in the paper and, and you know, there's a lot of, a lot of behind the scenes that do it. And staff, we can't commend you enough. That's all I have.
Susan?
I just want to remind the council about the governing body institute, April twenty ninth in Manhattan. Tim Berry has been signed up, but I don't know if that from any of y'all, you need to do it right now. But I just want to make sure that you know.
So Manhattan, Manhattan. So Manhattan.
It's more, it's a governing body institute. It's, it's not just the league's conference, but governing body institute. And then I just wanted to also remind you on the April sixteen party at work, point it out for staff and everybody in the family, not just staff. And we've moved the, the planning of the party that we've had planned, the murder mystery for January, to January fourteenth, the next year. The second Saturday. Anyway, that's all I have. I just wanted to throw those out.
All right. Anyone else?
Mayor, I was just going to mention that Councilman Tabor rarely misses and he is celebrating his twenty fifth anniversary on a trip with his wife. So you might tell him congratulations when he is back. He may be tan. I don't know where exactly he went.
It's been a pretty exciting year, year, y'all, and it's going to get more exciting. So if we keep working together, we'll get stuff, some cool stuff done, you know? Unfortunately, you know, I. Unfortunately, you know, I probably won't.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Let's get out of here.